There we go. Yep, let's see the picture of what we have. See what we can do.
This is the picture where I want to put it. This is the measurements that Matt did when he told me I could put my garage in the middle of my house. These are like the.
That one's gonna make more, that one's gonna make more sense for us. Okay, so explain what we're, we're up to here? You guys.
Oh. Yes.
This used to be an existing garage back in the eighties and whoever owned the house converted this into living space.
Okay.
So now, this is our drive and it leads up to the house. We would like to put a garage attached to this here. A one-car garage.
Gotcha.
Is what we're trying to do.
Can you say what your name is just?
Sergio Cortez. C-O-R-T-E-S.
Thank you, Sergio. Yes?
Yes, right.
So this. This goes all the way to the property line or?
That's just the way that, yeah, there's only like a foot and a half between the, the house itself and the property line.
Really? You want to continue that?
This way, correct.
This way.
Have we got a case on this or what?
No, they're, they're just kind of preliminary asking us what direction we.
We don't know what.
They, they don't know what direction to go with this. Um, most everybody looks at variance first. Is there?
Judgment by the building, building inspector?
Yeah. Have you talked to him? Matt Comer? Building inspector?
Did he talk to somebody?
Somebody on the phone. I called.
It was Matt?
Yeah.
He said, just ask your neighbors if they said it was okay, just build it, but. Right.
No, but he said that they probably have to ask the neighbors, which we had already asked.
Well, you.
This neighbor, this neighbor. Up across the street.
Any, any, any special permit or anything you'd have to do would have to get hundred percent approval from the neighbors?
Yep.
So if, if you had one neighbor, there'd be no sense in going through anything like that.
Right.
Can you summarize what conversation you two just had?
Right here, I'm looking at it. Here you go. So he's got. This house goes all the way to that.
I know to give variants, to be honest.
What is the crosshatcher? That's a house?
That's the house.
I'm not sure.
Okay, there's their paved driveway now.
Okay.
And they want to.
Not many.
Right. Cause I was talking to Matt.
This is their boundary line?
Yeah.
He's like six.
Putney?
Putney.
He works for some engineering company. And he was saying we'd have to apply for variants.
Okay.
Pre-existing.
Some places, yes.
So we could do it.
No, I mean, some places.
That's why we're, that's why we're here.
Generally, some of these buildings wouldn't be any more. You could judge them whether.
It wouldn't go further and it would be more problematic.
Setbacks, there's no setbacks. I mean, the way that, uh, the properties are all.
Yeah.
Over in Bradley Park, everything's close.
Was that what this is?
Yeah, so when they built the addition or actually the original project was there, it's only.
But they checked already.
Yeah.
Code from back in.
They will get notified for sure.
And what's the address there on your property?
Thirty-six.
Where's Roseanne?
Thirty-six.
Bradley Park.
Oh.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That's where we're thinking.
I think you have to go there from my, my recollection. Special permit depending on. The zoning enforcement officers should have, probably are if they talk.
Think so. That's, that's where we're going towards. I just.
They may be able to do it. It doesn't further encroach. I mean, you have to go to the language.
Yep.
That's the way this is going to.
Do you guys think that's the line? The path. That's where we're thinking, the path.
Oh, yeah. So we have an unusual provision in our law. It says, if you're already a non-conforming lot, uh, structure, this board can give you something called a special permit to allow you to extend that, provided that it doesn't make the non-conformity worse.
Okay.
And it looks like from the looks of your map, it looks like you got a long part of your building that's a foot from the boundary. Your garage would also be a foot from the boundary.
Correct.
Question for the board.
That's. I see that.
Just same non-conformity.
Yeah.
So we could, I mean, I'm not saying I have any idea what the answer is going to be, but I think we could, we could legally grant such relief.
Okay. Yeah, so that's, I wrote that down.
Okay.
Section six point one of our zoning bylaws. So, um, I would go down that route. Actually, though, Noah, I love your picture, but that, that makes more sense to us than, than the picture. I love your picture, though.
Yeah, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck with your scooter.
I won't see you Saturday. Be out of town. They're, they're Joe's Diner.
Yeah, I know. I was talking to.
Saturday morning. Oh, yeah, you, you have the whole Sorrentino clan in there, too. It's very interesting. Yeah, and be sure to wish Margaret a happy birthday every day. Oh, it's hilarious. I don't know, it's her birthday every week. It's fun. It's fun. Okay, um, Kathy, you wanna, you, do you have anything for us? Just observing? All right, Gordon, you're up. Okay?
Thank you. Um, I'll probably talk to you in this section also, your viewing of bylaws.
Okay.
And I have to apologize for missing your public hearing. My understanding that when it was canceled in early March, that the hearing, public hearing was going to be in April. So to be quite honest with you, didn't even look at the agenda and I had something going on the next day where I couldn't have attended anyway. But this, uh, my, this letter I'm about to read to you is from my wife, uh, Jane.
Uh huh.
Um, and if, could I read it out loud? So.
Yeah, you're fine. Yeah. Yep.
It says, uh, dear board members, I have concerns about the potential plan to extend the depth of split zone, non-residential lots into existing, uh, into existing residential zones. I've been greatly affected by zoning changes around our property after we constructed our home. I think there are many issues the board needs to consider when deliberating this potential change. We decided to purchase our property and build a home there because we knew the zoning around, what the zoning around us would allow. We were surrounded on three sides by a residential zone and the frontage was industrial for two hundred feet off Route 102. Not enough for any industrial connection or use to infringe on the five established residences next to us. After we invested in constructing our home, the zoning changed, creating the OPLI district as our butter and businesses and business uses in the two hundred foot I-zone area where a special permit to be able to reuse existing structures. Several years later, the two hundred foot I-zone setback from Route 102 became an RV zone, allowing businesses within the two hundred foot area by right with no oversight by the town. At a minimum, I'm asking the board to consider the following issues that will affect existing residential owners, should this idea pass in any form. Screening. There needs to be considerable thought concerning the screening of business uses of areas never before intended for business use from unsuspecting residential areas. Years ago, during a special permit hearing for allowing a business use in the existing building in the existing I-zone, the board believed the applicant who stated that the natural vegetation would be effective screening. However, the board never conducted a site visit or even after we requested the board to do so. The natural vegetation provides minimal screening from a multiple, from the multiple tractor trailer boxes used for storage, the RV units that are parked there in a broad range of work vehicles and the many tractor trailer boxes used for storage. During the summer months, the natural vegetation or non-summer months, excuse me, the natural vegetation dies down and this clutter, this clutter is a clearly a visible eyesore. During the development of the OPLI park, we were promised by the CDC representative that all street lighting would be screened from our view. We were also promised a row of trees that would be planted on the south side of Corey Hill Road to provide additional screening from the truck and street lights. That was not done. We see multiple streetlights all night. There is no need for those lights as no one's walking on the streets in OPLI after dark anyway. Also, there was an agreement between CDC, the orig, and the original owners of the medical facility and us that there would be two rows of screening vegetation between us and their building in order to minimize the noise and lighting on this site. The trees were never planted. A row of single, uh, hem, row of, a single row of hemlocks were eventually planted, but never pruned or maintained. Can see right through the middle of their building to their exit sign at the front door. They have this huge glass window in the back, anyway. And it's on all night. There are many new and intrusive noise businesses use, uh, business uses to bring to the residential neighbors. Trash pickup. We've been woken up by the crashing and banging of commercial trash pickup as early as 3:00 AM and almost certainly by 6:00 AM. Backup bells. We know snowplows need to clear business parking areas prior to business opening. We hear the backup bells of neighboring businesses before daylight. Also, there are often truck deliveries backing up as well as the potential for forklifts working at various hours. Backup bells can be heard day and night when unloading goods. Driven around, I mean, I drove around at 11:00 PM, 12:00 PM, and 1:00 PM to try and find the load, uh, ba, the loader backup bells. Trucks in general, delivery trucks often deliver during the night. They may park in the business lot with their engines running until the business is open. HVAC equipment. We hear neighboring business HVAC, uh, heating, ventilation, cooling equipment day and night. There are many factors to consider. Does the business use radios to communicate with employees or for entertainment, compressors, generators, chainsaws, other power equipment? The board needs to account for the new noises businesses will inflict on residential areas used to relative quiet. Lighting. The board should think carefully about lighting and place enforceable conditions on unneeded and intrusive lighting plans. Does the board support and consider the dark sky initiative? It's no longer dark, dark at our home at night. The business across the street has tall, unshielded, orange-colored pole lighting in parking lots that were used by a previous business. The parking areas are not even used by the current business. Our night sky is an orange hue and is especially orange when there's a cloud cover. The new cannabis business has an inordinate amount of unshielded lighting, direct visibility of the bulb, while the actual bulb could be shielded, especially when driving. This aids in the general lightning of the sky, night sky. I've also spoken of the unnecessary and unshielded street lighting we see at OPLI streetlights. Again, taking away from the visibility of our night sky and stars. Water runoff. Topography changes when there is construction. We've had water issues since Fox Run was developed. The retained, their retention basin was not properly constructed, allowing large amounts of silt erosion from the acres of disturbed land to run directly down the Brooklyn, settling our small pond. Our pond became their detention basin. We're still trying to get permission to remove the silt, which has reduced the area of our pond by about two-thirds. Uh, to about two-thirds of what it was before, and it's filling in with invasive species. Also, water runoff from the development has left the rear of our property, allowing for the growth of invasive species where they could not have grown before. It's become so wet as to kill off most of the trees that buffered us from the development's streetlights. Our field is now too wet for us to plant a good buffer to protect our line of sight. Smells. This issue is rarely thought of during special permit hearings. If this proposal passes in some form, then the special permit hearing should be conscious of potential smell issues. We've been burdened by the smell of coffee roasting since the business started its use, which was allowed by right in the OPLI district with no review. Unfortunately, the smell's like burning toast or burning tires. Also, the cannabis business emits a smoldering skunk smell. The smells emitted at any time of the day or night in these two businesses create a situation where we were reluctant to open our windows, hang out laundry, clothes stink when they air dry, and garden or perform yard work, or to enjoy having company on our screen porch. So the big question is, what would the process be for protecting homeowners from the expansion of commercial business encroachment into spaces designated as reserved for residential use? It appears that the board wants to allow, and I may be off on this, I may not have the most updated copy, uh, but when I wrote this, or she wrote this, it appears that the board wants to allow certain amount of encroachment to be by right. And I'll say perhaps very little oversight. This allows for no oversight and protection for existing residences or residents who wish to continue their quality of life without the uncertainty that comes with expanded and unchecked commercial use. If the proposal passes in any form, how will citizens of Lee be assured that the current and future boards will not only give serious consideration to the issues noted above, but will include conditions of use worded to allow for adequate enforcement of these conditions? What adjustments to current policies will be put in place to allow for and require proper enforcement, enforcement of the rules and conditions set by the current board as well as future boards? People bought their homes with an understanding of what is and isn't allowed by the zoning at the time of the purchase. We're living in an area that has undergone substantial zoning changes since nineteen eighty. The zoning along Route 102 quarter has changed twice since nineteen eighty when we built our home. Those zoning changes brought significant changes to the area and have impacted our lives in a negative way. No special permits or oversight is now required on many properties that use, uh, used to require public input. Our quality of life and enjoyment of our property has been and continues to be greatly diminished. We invite the board members to come visit our house to better understand our issues. And our hope is that this letter will help you understand the impact your decisions will have on Lee residents for years to come. Thank you, Jane Bailey.
Gordon.
Just say, something to think about, I know, and, and as a, I know my two minutes is probably up, but I will say that as the way it's written now, I would probably not support this, the way it's written now. I think that there maybe isn't enough language with, yeah, with, with really good language in it that better defines how far, I know that the copy I have, it could be an old copy, I apologize. Says that people buy a special permit can be allowed to go to the rear of their lot or like all of their lot. I mean, and if this is just to help two lots on Route 102, I think it's going overboard if that's the purpose, is to allow two lots to expand a bit. As I look at the lots, you know, some of them are six, eight hundred feet deep or six hundred feet in plus. That's definitely going to encroach a re, a business district and envelop it within the residential units with residential next to it. It's a, I just have my worries about, I think you need more. That's all. Uh, and maybe even spell out these particular items to make it mandatory on your review of every special permit.
Don't you think that'd be a little redundant, though, since we still have special permit findings and requirements?
I understand that. Yep, and I understand why they are, but these types of things are generally breezed over or people believe the applicants, they don't seem to come out on sites.
You, as long as you're around, I don't think they're going to be breezed over.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, all this happened under previous boards with different attitudes toward.
That one did. I mean, oh, the, uh, Corey Hill, I don't recall much of that one, other.
No, that was, well, yeah, that was, that was around nineteen eighty-six or eighty-seven. That's what got me geared up and involved in politics in Lee. That and the dump that, um, Mead wanted to put up off Berry Street, that got me off my couch and involved in government in around eighty-six. Anyway.
Suggestions would you offer?
Well, if, yeah, if, if nothing else, then under the special permit, as far as policies go, at least, boy, excuse me, at least I think the board had, ought to have written policies where when you have a special permit that not just the five findings, the five basic findings, they don't talk about smell. They don't really get that involved in, right, you know, they don't get that involved in how are you going to use your property, but maybe you could consolidate or create a little better, um, suggested review, not necessarily in the bylaw, but as a planning board policy, which you're allowed to have of to, uh, kind of hone in on your, your review. And in, this isn't, I'm not speaking against this board. You guys do a great job. I've watched, I've come, I think you do a great job. So this is not meant at all to say I think you're not doing a good job. I'm just saying that based on our history with the town and with other boards and lack of zoning enforcement in the past.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about the current zoning enforcement out there, but in the past, it's like talking to the wall, you know, and, and we're very frustrated. You have certain things happen around you when you have no control over it. Um, and when you do go in to make comments, you're kind of blown off because you're just the neighbor, you know, who's complaining, so.
Gordon, I, I, reading, and when you were reading your letter, most of this stuff, anybody who's been around town for a while has seen you fight.
Yes, I know.
Every piece of it.
And here we go again.
I believe that through the town and through your positions, that a lot of these haven't been taken care, I mean, from the lights to the, I mean, the noises.
Yeah.
All this, the pond, uh.
I try not to use my position for anything, Dave, and I was off for ten years, you know, off of any position in town, just trying to get help. Uh, we did get permission finally to get some of the silt out of our pond by the Conservation Commission. It was very helpful, but then the state overturned it. You got a one person at the state level who had some kind of bug about the way it was written and, uh, so we're still going to come back after that, but it's been, um, I've worked with the CDC representative before they no longer have a CDC representative, you know, in a way, I mean, they had an individual who did all this stuff with us and then he was gone and nobody. Beer, when he was here, he bought the light. He, he was never told that they were supposed to be shielded. You know, so it was a communication issue and because it wasn't a special permit issue and they were installed, it's like, oh, too bad.
Thanks. The lighting, okay? Right now, we're, you know as well as I do, uh, we're going to look into LED lighting.
Yes.
New LED lighting.
Yeah.
Dim it and time it to dim.
Absolutely.
Much, but it can happen, uh, but since.
And all of it's down.
However, however, the problem with that, Dave, is these Main Street lights and the one in Corey Hill aren't involved in that program. Otherwise, I'd ask them, just turn love at night. There's nobody down. Walking their dog or, yeah, anyway, so I, I don't mean to take up your time during public comment. I just had to say this. And, um, I'll, I'll try and get updated copies and I do have some concerns about the, did you also pass the storage one or which?
Storage one. Yeah, go ahead, uh, Peter.
I don't need to belabor this issue.
It is. I, I'm fine with it. Yep.
So I, I think, Gordon, that you're mistaken about by right. I think everything.
Yeah.
Under this is going to be special permit.
Okay.
You don't get anything extended without a special permit, as the way I remember it.
Yeah.
Second, I kind of agree. I had a little go around a couple of years ago about.
Yeah.
And I was completely unsatisfied with just about everybody in town government that I dealt with.
Yep.
Including the town attorney, who wouldn't help in any way, wouldn't even answer my emails.
Right.
So I'd be welcome, I'd welcome any chance to talk with you or anybody about ways to improve enforcement of our zoning bylaw. And do you have any ideas about that? I mean.
I do, but it's not for this, for it at this moment in time. I'd be, I'd love to talk to you about it. In fact, one good thing, and, and one thing I think you should consider is, is, as I mentioned before, having the zoning enforcement officer here at a sum of your meeting, not every meeting, I don't think that's necessary. But when you're debating and honing in on final zoning language that you want to put out for the public to discuss, you might want to talk to him as, as I pointed out to you earlier before the meeting, just you here, I didn't violate any open meeting laws. Um, you know, there are some, some language in here that could make this be totally differently than you think this is going to be enforced. And in fact, may even allow for non-enforcement on something like new apartment complexes and new hotels and for the dumpster storage outdoors. So anyway, there's some things I'd love to talk to you about.
My final, uh, question for you is you mentioned the dark sky.
Yeah, dark side of the issue, yeah.
I, I feel like there's too much light in Lee, in a lot of places.
Agreed.
Like, some of the gas stations look to me like international spaceports, you know, ready for the spaceships to come in. They're so lighted up, they, they light up under the, under the islands, the side of the islands are, you know, lighting up and look like some sort of plow floating over the town. But also the street lighting, which I think something the selectmen could do something about. We had a, in front of my place, we had an old light that burned out. They put in a new LED and, oh my God, it's like in front of the cameras in the police station, you know?
Right.
So bright.
Say it in the forties or fifties. The old movies were like, but this. Please do not do that.
It's very. I decide from whatever I might think it reminds me of.
Yeah, right.
Needlessly bright.
Exactly.
It probably, you know, I, I'm not sure how you quantify lighting really, but it's probably at least five times brighter than the old one. Which maybe not was inadequate, but five times, you know, ten times? Anyway, so I, I'd like to do something, I'll just say, I'd like to do something about excessive lighting. I feel like commercial mandate for the business is to get brighter and brighter than your neighbor because it brings in customers and I understand that, but I think the town has an interest in sort of throwing a little bit of a blanket on that.
And sometimes they leave their lights on when they aren't even open. It's an even bigger problem and one that could be adjusted in our bylaws and to enforcement. But again, I appreciate your time. I know it was a long, long, it's run away. For issues later, when you talk about some other. Also, I want to, I want to discuss one other thing, but under that.
Are you, um, do you want to, uh, yeah, let's get this one done.
Yeah, yeah.
Question. Definition of residential.
There you go.
Is an apartment building residential?
Absolutely. So is a hotel, so is a motel. That's what I was discussing.
No, a hotel and motel could not be.
Yeah, they are. They're, uh, a hotel motel is an R1 residential.
Well, that's the building structure.
It's the use of the property. It's a, it's a residential use. That's why I'm saying in one section on your storage, you might have wanted to say uh, one and two family residential uses instead of just saying residential uses.
Might be right, but you know, Gordon, we, in our bylaw, it has writ, one and two family residential uses in one place and it says hotel and motel in another place. Different use.
Sure, but how is, how is your zoning enforcement officer going to, if you don't have a definition of what you mean in that section by residential, which you could have easily just said one and two family residential?
I agree.
Um, it, again, I, I'm big on, and I've always been big on being very clear about enforcement issues. So you, you know exactly what the planning board intended and then how you're supposed to enforce it. To me, you could, you can come all day long and I'll say, well, you know, you can appeal this to the zoning board, but that's my zoning enforcement because I know the general term for residential is in the building code where you determine uses. It's a residential use. Apartment buildings, hotels, motels, so, uh, and also outdoor storage issues. I have issues with the first sentence here, but I'll talk about.
We didn't touch that. That's old.
I know, and it needs to be amended. That's what I'm saying. Now, you have a chance, let's do it right.
I don't, can we, well?
No, it may be too, no, this is what I want to talk about later. Okay, I don't want.
Yeah? All right.
You can go on with your business and I'll be back. I'm not leaving.
Okay. All right, next up, uh, we have site plan review, Fifty Water Street. Rebecca? Might need some help here.
On here?
Okay. Let me see. Are you able to share yours? Do you want to share your screen, Rebecca, or?
I certainly can. I have my plans up.
Okay. Uh, are you able to?
I believe it's disabled currently.
Help, Beth. There we go.
I try again?
There you have. Oh, there we go.
It's pretty stable.
We had to do the make host and then she had to.
Charging stations. New slab. Control conduit. Very complete plan.
Okay, Rebecca, I think I made you the host, so I believe you can share now.
All right, I believe I'm sharing. Tell me if you can see that my, my plan's up. Trying to find y'all. I think I've lost y'all.
Yeah.
You're still here, but not your plans.
Okay, let me see. Bear with me just a moment.
Paper. How about if we just get started?
Yeah, I'm afraid I've lost my Zoom meeting.
You're still with us.
You're with us still.
Walk us through it, will you?
Yeah.
Can you hear us?
Absolutely. Yes, I can hear you fine. Thank you very much. Um, if you would, um, first off, I'd like to thank y'all for allowing us to present this application tonight. And further, if I could, um, I'm going to try, um, just hoping you could see my plans. Um, if you don't mind, I'd like to make some introductions first, if that's okay. Um, my name again is Rebecca Sharp and I'm with the SAI Group. We're the design builder for this project. Um, the project owner, excuse me, let me back up a moment. As design builder, we're responsible for development of the construction designs, utility coordination, permitting and construction. And the project owner, Electrify America, um, I believe they're midway through a 10-year commitment um, to develop the nation's largest network of universal level three electric vehicle car charging stations in the nation. Um, I believe that this site, if it's approved, would be either the 19th or 20th site in the state of Massachusetts. Um, the Electrify America has been able to do this by partnering with corporate entities like Simon Property Groups, Walmart, Target, um, Kroger, um, businesses like this that have made a commitment to increasing sustainability and supporting clean energy initiatives. Um, so those are the stakeholders, those are, um, the participants to this application. Um, and if there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and speak to the project.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Um, the project proposes transitioning 14 existing parking stalls in the, um, at the Premium Outlets Mall, converting those to six parking stalls equipped with level three or direct current fast charging dispensers. The balance of those parking stalls will be used to establish a space for what's called an equipment pad. This is the infrastructure that's required to operate the charging dispensers themselves. So we'll have six charging dispensers and then on this concrete equipment pad, we will have four power cabinets. We'll have our multi-based switch gear, that's a 2,000 amp switch gear, and we'll have a utility provided transformer. So from an energy flow perspective, um, utility power will be provided from, um, probably a, a new pole that's yet to be determined. Um, but we'll have an, a prime area run that'll come into the transformer. We'll install underground conduit to the equipment pad that feeds into the switch gear. The switch gear will then power the power cabinets, which will convert that energy from alternating current to direct current and then out to the dispensers themselves. Um, the project will also include, uh, line striping. Um, we'll re-stripe these parking stalls and we'll apply new stenciling indicating that these are stalls are reserved for EV charging only. Um, in addition, we're proposing one new light pole. It's a 15-foot pole with a 50K LED fully cut off fixture. Um, each dispenser will be protected by stainless steel ballards. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I was saying, I'm sorry. Um, each dispenser will be protected by stainless steel ballards and there will be ballards placed around the equipment pad as well.
The, the light pole you're going to put up?
Yes, sir. A 15-foot tall with a 50K LED light fixture, um, be fully cut off. As I heard from the discussion earlier that there's some concerns about the LED lighting, um, there is an option to go to a, 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 a less bright light, um, with a 30K fixture if that's preferred.
Terms of lighting, what is the unit that you? Kilowatts? No. 50 kilowatts? No.
Is that, is that 30,000 lumens?
30,000 lumens, I believe is correct.
That's your, it's your outdoor street lights.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
It is replacing one fixture that's already there.
It's, and I think it, that, that would be adding a, a pole, right?
That's correct. I believe this would be a new pole. Correct.
Or replace the, or replace one. Cause right now there's a, there's a light fixture right in the middle of that parking field now. It's close to the building.
There is an existing light fixture. It looks like they're going to keep that light fixture there. Um, this would be one in addition.
Took that to be removed.
Rebecca, um, just to clarify for everyone is, is that, what are the lights up there? So they have an idea. Do, do you know what they're rated at?
No, sir, I don't. I don't know what the, what the rating is for the existing light. We don't have any specifications on that.
Okay, I guess we'll go on.
The ones there now.
Yep. Gotcha. Okay, I guess we'll continue.
Let me see what else. Um, as you'll notice on our plans, and I'm, I'm referring to our enlarged site plan sheet A3, we have, um, the dispensers are placed, uh, back to back or side, you know, side by side. Um, so that a motorist can pull in, either pull in or back in, depending on where their charge port is. Each stall is, uh, sized at 10 foot eight inches to allow, uh, the, the motorist to get in and out of their car with ease and access the dispenser. The dispensers, um, are provided or equipped with a retractable cord. Uh, the charging cable is mounted at the top of the dispenser, um, so we don't have any overhang of the charging cable within the parking stall. And then we have finally one, one aisle with an access route that would allow somebody with a mobility, um, concern to be able to access the, uh, charging cables as well. The code, the, the plans do call for the removal of one tree. Um, there is a tree in a landscape island that would be recurved, uh, to allow replacement of that elect, uh, equipment pad. And based on the site available, the space available, there does not appear to be enough space to replace that tree. So the proposal currently stands to remove that, that one tree in the small landscape island.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Hey Conrad, shoot.
A couple of questions and comments here. Uh, we saw the plan, but I didn't see an application. Is this a, is this a site plan approval application or is this a special permit amendment? Cause the entire, the entire facility there's, there by special permit. So is this an amendment to a special permit or is this a, a new site plan approval?
Site plan approval is what we were, um, advised by, um, the planning department.
Right.
Uh, site plan review, uh, approval is what we were advised.
Application.
No, it'd be an amendment.
Right.
An amendment to the site plan? Yep.
Okay, is, is Simon the applicant, applicant here or is Electrify American, America LLC, are they the applicant?
Electrify America is the applicant. I believe SAI is listed as the applicant, as the agent for Electrify America.
So you have legal authorization on behalf of Simon then, correct?
It's correct.
Uh, right now the parking on this, uh, it looks like that parking field right now is 17 spaces that's there today. You're going to have six EV charging positions and then three parking spaces will be created post-construction. Uh, so that basically this could be a net loss of eight cars in that parking field. I guess my question is, is there a gross parking number under the original special permit for the mall that has to be looked at or we got, it seems like, yeah, plenty of parking up there.
Seems that.
If there is a net loss of parking due to this installation, does that matter?
Which one you're asking?
I guess the board.
The board?
I don't know.
Do you remember what I'm saying?
Absolutely. And that's typically one of the questions that we would, we would, uh, query the planning department zoning office, um, as we begin our due diligence on that. And I, I recall, uh, certainly not anything in writing, but, but there was not a concern that there was a parking, um, deficit on this property. Um, I believe it was, it was, uh, stated it was overparked, uh, that there's sufficient parking there, that that wouldn't be a concern. Um, otherwise we would typically do a parking study.
I, I would agree. It seems like there's ample parking there, you know, to handle it.
Olden days.
Mm-hmm.
I know, sometimes I'm, some of the applications I've done like this in the past, if I have a smaller location, I'm taking EV charging positions, removing parking, I have to make up regular car parking somewhere else on the site, which I don't think is really a problem. I guess it was more of an economic question. This is, if there's a gross number that was required under special permit, you know, you have a net reduction of eight parking spaces, that's going to be an issue.
Understood.
Seems like.
Is, do you think, does anyone think that eight, losing eight is going to hurt up there?
I don't think so.
Not in today's conditions.
No.
Okay. I don't think so. Never seems to be an issue.
Right, right.
Didn't they used to perk down?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
These are bussaman years ago.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I remember.
This is the best, this is the best parking area for some stores. So some people might have to walk farther from their car. Have adequate parking in my opinion.
It also seems like there's six EV charge positions. One of the looks, one does look like it's a, a handicap spot on the far left side. That, that's what that is, right?
Yes, sir. That's intended for anyone who needs to access the charging dispenser from a wheelchair, needs additional space.
Okay, uh, also the power units and the switch gear, they appear to be within this fenced off area here in the back. Eight feet high and you're using this, uh, eight, eight-foot-high Trex composite fence with ballards all around it. So, uh, is there an issue with an eight-foot-high fence? Certainly going to screen it. Is there a height requirement in this zone?
There, though, over six requires a permit, so it all would need to be permitted.
Okay. It's a permit or is that going to be, or is that going to be part of the site plan approval? We would have to grant such deviation from the.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna either deny, approve or deny an amendment to the site plan. So that would be part of their site plan. I, I would, that's how I see it.
Lighting positions, that's going to be adequate. The lumens might be a little higher than what we're going to want. Uh, it seems like the stormwater, there's no stormwater interference with what they're going to build here. Everything's sort of grades to the, uh, to the left. So I don't, I don't see a stormwater impact here at all. And these are, these are basically superchargers, right?
Yes, sir. These are. Yeah, level three or DC fast chargers, direct current. So the power cabinets actually bring in, are fed, um, AC power from the switch gear. And then it's converted to direct current in the power cabinets that's fed to the dispensers. The dispensers in, uh, incidentally are, are inert essentially until a car pulls to the stall and connects the charging cable to the car. Uh, that's when energy flow begins to, to travel from the dispenser into the vehicle. So there's no electrical transfer from the power cabinets to the dispensers until the charging session is actually activated.
Actually, uh, can Tesla go here too or no?
Uh, currently, absolutely. Um, that's one of the wonderful things about this. These are universal, um, charging stations. They have, they're equipped with what's called a CCS charging connector. And that's what you're going to find on the vast majority of EVs being on the road today as well as being anticipated being manufactured in the future. Uh, Teslas can buy up an aftermarket adapter that will allow them to use these, uh, charging stations. The inverse is not necessarily the case yet. Um, for instance, if it's not a Tesla, they would not be able to use one of the Tesla superchargers that after, aftermarket connector is not yet available. I understand that there's, um, plans to bring that, uh, to market soon.
That's all in.
Okay, I think our only, uh, Gordon. Can I say, could I speak first?
I'm waiting for you.
All right, um, I, I see the only issue is the light. Um, I, I would say that we put in our wording, uh, whoever proposes a a motion that the, the light be, uh, the same as what the rest would be a safe assumption for us.
Same.
The same as the rest that are in there.
Needed that brighter light just because you're making the electrical connection and could we make a motion if we find it's too bright, ask them to change. Cause I, I got a funny feeling they're going to say that for safety issues, when you pull in there, you have to plug the current and they want to make sure that it's like daylight.
You're, you're possibly going to be in shadow anyway. Um, EV1 and EV2, EV6. There's one over, where's the existing lights up here, but EV1 is a possible dark spot. Gordon, you got anything else?
Uh, yes, sir. I, I just, if I remember correctly, I mean, and, and I don't know if these people know this, so I'm just bringing it to their attention as well as to the board's attention. When the original special permit went out, that, um, there's a requirement for the parking lighting to be reduced at night at a certain time. I think it's either, uh, certainly by 11 o'clock, but it used to be like within an hour and a half after all the businesses closed or at 11, all the lights are supposed to be dimmed up there. And you do see that, uh, I don't know if the known owners even read, I assume they read their special permit and did their due diligence, but they may not have, um, let these folks know that in fact, no matter what wattage they use or voltage or whatever they use up there, is that there's going to be a requirement for a certain point in time at night, that that's going to have to be reduced. So I think your thoughts of making this um, contingent on the same, uh, lighting lumens that they have now and to follow the original special permit issuance and dim them down as any others would be. So it's not one bright light in the middle of the night that's going to attract people up there to fire up their cars. And I would agree with you that, um, that you're going to, I mean, which side is the light, i- is your charging port on? You know, you're going to have a shadow when you go to plug your, your, uh, your unit in anyway. And I, I don't think that it's that confusing on how to plug these things in. Even in, even if it was dim and then dusk, I don't think you'd have any problem plugging these in. But I, I did want to bring to everybody's attention that there is a requirement for those lights, the parking area lights to dim down at night. So they don't just have one beacon up there, no matter what they choose. That's all. Thank you very much.
Which goes to the other question too. Is this a 24-hour situation or is this only operating during the normal operating hours of the mall?
That's an excellent, excellent question. Thank you. No, these are operable 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And I do want to point out that in addition to the, the 15-foot pole, the dispensers themselves have a, a green LED lighting on the dispensers themselves, um, part of the dispenser. Um, now that, uh, is easily dimmable and can be done so remotely.
Okay, so basically like if you're on the turnpike through ways, whatever, to have 24-hour EV charging available, this is going to be one of those 24-hour availabilities.
Correct. Yes, sir. Um, motors can find these, I'm sorry?
If you down the big Y, they've got a, uh, a Tesla proprietary station down there that's open 24 hours a day. Even though the Y was closed. So it's to be expected this would be 24 hours as well.
That's correct.
That's what, that's what the request is anyway.
Yes, that's correct.
What about the size of the fence? Eight feet, six feet? Does it matter?
I, up there, I don't think so.
Okay. So would that have to be?
They're, they're in their own city up there.
I know they are. I know. It's a separate zone sort of. Yeah.
Anything else in, uh?
We'll be talking, I just want to understand a little more about the lumens business. Um, 50,000 lumens is, from what I can see, it's about 30 or 3,500 watt bulbs, the light from a 30 or 3,500 watt bulbs. Which is according to this source on the internet is, hundred watt bulb produces 1,600 lumens. So it's 1.6 kilo lumens and they're proposing 50 kilo lumens. So 50 divided by 1.6 is about 30, 35. So 50 divided by 1.6 is about 30, 35. So I'm trying to imagine 3500 watt light bulbs lined up above these places and I'm thinking that's.
But it's not. It's one light that's going down. But I, I, I think put on them that they have to maintain what else is up there. Yep, come on up.
Anyway, so I, I think, I mean, I don't want to make a decision based on 100% adherence. But a little bit that I know, I think I know is that this is going to be darn bright, this 50 K.
I bet you you'll find the ones that are up there are very close to that, the, the streetlights that are up there.
Okay.
I would think you would know that.
Yeah, I was hoping.
Do you have a standard for the Lee streetlights? Is there a lighting level for standard streetlights? Anybody know?
Not that I, not on parking lot ones and they're right around that.
Another way of looking at it too is generally this, this has parking lot lighting, typically a Walmart or a mall or whatever. You're dealing with a gas station, for example, usually the gas station lighting underneath the canopy illuminating the fueling positions is generally more intense, like more directed downward.
Yes.
This is a fueling position, just like gasoline is, it's a fueling position or charging position. So the lighting should be a little bit better. Be directed downward.
I agree with a little bit better than the streetlights, but.
Maybe the thing to do is instead of having one central unit light fixture there, maybe put maybe two or three units across the field and a much lower lumen. So at least they would get decent lighting around each charging station, yet be less intense.
Ms. Sharp, do you know if your client would object to us imposing the 30 K limit that you mentioned earlier?
No, sir. I don't believe they would be at all.
Thank you. We'll move if you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
I, no, Gordon.
A question and, and there's, I was looking for the actual fixture. Is it a downlight and what is it? And it's hard to tell from what they've got here. I can't find any decent looking lighting, but I would think also.
We want to get a submetal on the light?
We have a lighting detail on sheet D three.
That's what I was looking for. I was at D one.
This is a pretty standard parking, lighting fixture for parking lots.
Yep.
The bulb's not lower than the shield.
Oh, no, there, it's all.
I don't know what they're going to ask for unless it's on the plan.
So it is shielded, it is facing down?
Oh, definitely.
My only thoughts are if, if during your motion, you, I'm big on this is to make sure that you mentioned this plan, the date, you know, all this, but also.
You've trained me.
Yeah, thank you. But you also, I believe because there's a special permit on this, you may need to also make the motion that this is a minor change so that it doesn't have to go through the application process again, just as a thought.
We've marked.
I know the lumens sound huge, but for parking lot lighting, you've got to remember they're up a lot higher than, than your standard light.
Yeah.
And they, that's in the ballpark.
So, all right, so I'm going to make a motion for.
But I would say, I would say to keep it safe would be to maintain the lumens of the existing.
Okay, well, I disagree.
Want to lower?
Yeah, I'm going to say she won't object to 30. I'm going to make a motion for 30.
Oh, no, that, I don't know if they're, the others might be 30.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I'm recognized to make a motion, I move that in relation to the petition for site plan review dated.
Down there? How about that date down? There you go.
Three twenty-nine?
Okay. Dated March 29, 2023, the submission by Simon Lee Premium Outlets of Lee, Mass. And Electrify America be approved, be first treated as complete, as filed. Second, treated as a minor site plan review. And third, approved on the condition that the pole lighting be reduced to 30,000 lumens.
That covers it? Sound right?
Do you have to adjust the height of the fence? If six foot is this?
Yeah, it's building code. Hey, is there a second?
Yeah, that's second motion.
Matt, you there?
I'm here.
Anything on that?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm good with it. It's, it's a huge parking lot up there and there's a ton of lighting. So I think the 30,000 is fine, or I was fine with existing lights, but so I'm, I'm, I'm good.
We can add some of the amendments and we can see how the board feels about 30.
Well, what if the ones up there are only 20? Then you got a brighter one.
Well, she proposed 50.
I know. Go big or go home.
I mean, I think we should, I, I mean, I think we should refer back to what they're, I think the, the best way, black and white way would be to, to continue with the existing site plan that's on file. But I'm okay going along with this also. I just offering my opinion. And when do we clarify that this, should we clarify that this is amendment to the site plan or the special permit or a minor change before we pass the motion or?
I think, add that to the end, Peter, I think would be good.
Well, I'm not sure what, what it is that I'm adding. I mean, if you have a site plan application.
No, it's a, but it's, and it's a minor change to the existing, an amendment.
It's a minor amendment.
Okay.
And my motion says that we should approve it as a site plan review. But I don't know anything about a special permit amendment. And if we did say it was a special permit amendment, we'd pretty much have to start from scratch and you can notify a lot of people and wait a couple of weeks after a newspaper ad and that sort of stuff. So I, I'm not sure I want to get into those waters.
I believe that the motion when it was made, that you're finding that it's a minor adjustment. You're right without reposting a special permit here and applying. If you found that it was not a minor, then they would have to apply to adjust or amend their special.
We're all set.
The fact that you're saying it's a minor adjustment, that means they don't have to repost and go down that road.
Thank you. Sounds good. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote. Peg?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Donovan, aye. Okay, thank you, Rebecca. You are all set.
Thank you so much. Have a pleasant evening.
Oh, hold on again. Set.
She left.
She's left. Okay, moving on, master plan update. Is there an update?
You haven't had a meeting since I last talked to you, I think, but there are some developments. I think I told you about the successful, in my view, successful forum we had on, I think, February 18th. Since then, at the end of March, the survey has closed, the online survey has closed. And I believe we have approximately 350 responses. If you look at it as a share of 6,000 people living in town isn't very good, but we, we're actually quite, I'm quite pleased with it. And I feel like the community really got engaged. We got a lot of comments, a lot of people responded. And I think generally the people who were more active in town and more interested in the town affairs were the ones who responded. We, we had it out to the library, to the senior center, all around. We had paper copies. So there was two ways to do it. You could do it online or you could do it by paper. And the paper copies were collected here in Town Hall and those, some of those are now being coded at the Regional Planning Commission by the staff up there. And we will be, the master plan committee will be meeting next Thursday. And on the agenda will be to hear a report about the survey, what people said during, in the survey, what the trends were. We will also be hearing next time from the chief of police, fire chief about the public safety needs of the town. About those matters. I know that there's a lot of stuff in flux. There's the papers reported on negotiations with Stockbridge for things. And I know there's a lot of things changing, but I wanted the committee to hear about the circumstances of the fire department and of the police department, which I consider quite unpleasant in general. I mean, the fire department has to have tiny little, not tiny little trucks, they're big trucks, but your size by modern standard trucks to fit into the building. Police have to, the jail is underneath where we're sitting and the police have to go by their lockers to get to, get the prisoners to the jail. And there's just a lot of stuff that I happened to hear about recently, which is kind of unsatisfactory in my view. And I want to have the chiefs come in and share that with the committee next week. And then I'm, I've been pushing our staff to help us try to begin to grapple with the goals, which is really the heart of the work. I mean, we, we've really spent a lot of time. We're, we're seven months into it now and we spent a lot of time familiarizing ourselves with the town and the circumstances in town, the views of townspeople. But we're going to have a plan that is used by the town over the next five, 10, 15 years. It's going to have to be comprehensible and readable and it's going to have to have goals and tasks that are sensible and achievable. And that, that's hard work. And so I'm hoping to get the committee going on that, not at this meeting, but at the next meeting. So I'm, I'm anticipating at the end of this coming meeting, asking the members to prepare two or three things individually that they would ask for to be stated, stated goals for the master plan. So we can begin that discussion then in May. And in the meantime, the regional planning people are helping us with the Open Space and Recreation Plan Project, which is a separate contract that Lee has with the Regional Planning Commission. It's a separate plan, even though a lot of the content gets sort of sucked into the master plan. The Open Space Recreation Plan was redone most recently in 2017, 16. Kathy was on it. Kathy's on the new committee. Committee has been appointed. They haven't yet scheduled their first meeting. But they.
It's Tuesday, I think, right? It's Tuesday at six.
Okay, didn't know. Okay. And so I, I'm thinking that, or hoping that both projects will be completed about the end of this calendar year. And that may be pushing it a little bit for the OSRP people, but they have a more recent product to fix than we do in the master planning committee. And their scope is a little narrower, so maybe they can get to, get it through in seven or eight months. In any case, the Regional Planning Commission is asking the town to extend the contract through the end of the calendar year for the OSRP project. And also to add a little money for an additional survey, which personally I'm in support of. The survey would be of businesses in town whom we haven't really heard much from in the master planning sort of data collection process up to now. We have heard from the chamber, but there are a lot of businesses in town that do not participate in the chamber. And the chamber person is new and the budget for the chamber in Lee is about half of what it is in Lennox and she works for both Lee and Lennox. So I felt in the independent of me, came to the same conclusion that we need to hear more data from, an opinion from the business community. So they are proposing a amendment to the contract to add a certain number of dollars to also conduct an economic development survey of town businesses. And depending on what the price is, I guess, which we don't know yet exactly, I think I'm going to be supporting that. I'm going to be proposing that to the master plan committee next week. Hoping that the town will approve this if the master plan committee supports it. That's it.
Good. Coming right along.
Well, you know, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot to learn about the town. And some people know a lot when they came in, some people didn't. And we just spent a lot of time familiarizing ourselves. And we, we only meet once a month and I try to keep the meetings to two hours. And so, you know, we just, it's just only so fast you can go. And I, but I really do want to be finished by Christmas.
The Open Space Committee, are you having a tough time filling that or?
No, actually I had a couple of people that I had on the list to call when I filled it up. There's, there's eight people in it now. Kathy's in it. I got somebody from the Conservation Commission. Youth, what's your youth group, youth, youth commission, agriculture commission. Braille person. You remember else? Who else, Kathy? I, I tried to spread her, oh, I got Lenny Tisdale to agree to come because I thought it was important that the because they, they have to basically maintain everything and construct a great deal of them. That what they can do and can't do and how much it costs would be an important thing to keep in mind all the way through. Lenny wasn't able to commit yet to attend all the meetings, but I, I put him on anyway because I thought it was important that he keep a hand in the game, in this game. He was very helpful.
Now, do you have to, so you'll, will that be another warrant article on the?
No, there's money in the budget between what the town appropriated. I'm not sure I can give you all the details, but between what the town received from the state and what the town appropriated in the last year, there's probably enough to do what they're requesting.
Okay, good. Okay, moving on, we have our zoning amendments. Gordon, I think you wanted to talk about the, the storage. Yeah. I had that.
And again, they have something that's antiquated. I hope not, maybe it's not too antiquated. And as, as I'm looking at the section to amend, I, I know that section A is actually already on our bylaw, but what I would to is that our original writing of our bylaw was in the late 60s and adopted in 1972. Prior to the Uniform State Building Code, which every town knows that. And there was language in that legislation that said anything that conflicts with the state building code would be sunsetted. Well, this is a section that probably should be, should have been sunsetted long ago. And they talked about all materials, supplies and equipment in storage, meaning a, a fire prevention standard in the national fire protection agency. But, you know, outdoor storage, I think you're, you're in good shape if it were to say outdoor storage. But because it's all materials in storage and this would conflict with the storage requirements in the state building code. And if someone were to point that out to the Attorney General's Office, it might shoot the whole thing down. And, and maybe an easy amendment would be on town, on the town meeting floor or during the baby town meeting. Probably even still have time to, two weeks post until the town meeting, but maybe not, it's going to be close, to make some adjustments. The other is.
So is that? I'm trying to go back. Do you have? Did we put that? Yeah, I know.
Should I have all material supplies?
No, he's, yeah.
Should I be stored? Is, is that what you have?
No, I meant what you were talking about.
Yeah, what I'm talking about is should I be stored? Prevention, yeah. No, it's outdoor storage, I would agree with you, but if it's indoor storage, that this conflicts with the state building code, that you would go by the requirements of state building code as far as the storage and requirements. And from the state building code, you may be. from the state building code, you may be sent to an NFPA standard, but there's so many different standards now than there used to be in nineteen seventy-two, as far as which kind of materials you'd store and, and how they're handled and what use group it makes the building. And I, it gets a little more complicated, but this has just never been looked at before. Um, and also in the section B, the last part, this requirement does not apply to residential uses. You touched on this earlier, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, if you have your zoning enforcement officer, there's also the building official. Unless you say in the beginning of our bylaw, and I've harped on this before about definitions, definitions, definitions. You know, if you have, for the purpose of this bylaw, residential only means one or two family homes. Then I think gold in here, and it's an opportunity to make that adjustment here. Um, because otherwise motels, hotels, apartment complexes, those are all residential uses.
Well, simply just put in, this requirement does not apply to
One and two family. One and two family, you know, I mean, that would be an easy sell. You could check with the town attorney to see if that's a major amendment. Um, and also at the D two, your container, what is a residential sized garbage can to you? Go up to, you know, it, it should be no larger than, you know, whatever. I don't know what size Casellas and Daley's was and all that, you know, is it thirty-five gallon, is it fifty gallon? Fifty gallon dump's pretty big, but you know, what size are those? You might want to be specific as to container size. If you're talking about residential or, uh, you know, I know they're talking about roll out plastic wheel storage canisters. I've seen some over the head dump by Daley's and others that, and Casellas that are kind of rubberized or the rubberized roof that they actually have to pick up and dump overhead, you know? Um, you're not attending that, you know, I think again, if you go back to a size limit, you'd be better off and, and especially clarify the issue on, on this section. That it's one and two family sized garbage cans or come up with a, see what size the Casella ones are that are
What we did is we put every, we said every, every size, right? Except for res, but not in residential.
It's just, containers include metal dumpsters, uh, because you have containers just generally.
Right, so.
That just roll her out, wheel storage canisters and residential sized garbage cans. And now the question is, what does that mean?
That's even for, for commercial. Any, anything that they put trash in.
I get that. I get the commercial part, but what's, I guess my question was, what's a residential sized garbage can? So can a single family have an eight yard dumpster that they dump over?
Well, no, because you know what? That single family wouldn't be covered, affected by this.
Yeah, so the answer is yes, they can do that.
Yes, they can.
Yeah, but you need to go back and, and make sure you're talking about, well, residential, are you talking about the apart, in other words?
Well, that's what, that's what I think. That is our issue. I think if we clarify that is our only thing. Fun deal.
Yeah, so I think that's the clarification.
I think, I think the, the way it's going to come out is that if you're a business, any sort of garbage container you have needs to be enclosed.
Got it. Yes.
And if you're a residence, nothing that you have needs to be enclosed.
If you're a one or two family residence, you know?
I can't, I, I see, I'm still trying to, so why, why do we even have hotel, motels, apartments listed in our uses per zone? They're all residential.
Why not? Because they're, they're commercially viable.
Right, right.
But under the state's building code, they're classified as residential uses. Unless you go to your bylaw and in our definitions in the bylaw, say that for the purpose of our bylaw, eh, that hotels, motels and apartments will meet the commercial requirements. Something like that, that, that could probably be fine.
Gordon's right. I think, I don't think we ever just in the bylaw, I refer to
No.
plain old residential use.
That's what you said.
Residential zones.
Right.
Yeah.
Business residential.
Right.
One or two.
Multi-family residential.
Right, but it multi-family, there's an apartment, it's still called multi-family residential. It's not multi-family commercial. So it's just, you know, I, I know this is crazy, but, and, and I wish I had
Well, how do we, how do we fix it now?
Well, I think, I think the idea is right. We, we, we try to add somehow, and I have a process question about it. Somehow, if we figure out the process, we amend it as residential.
As one and two family.
One family and two family residential.
And I think
I would clear up this enforcement. And again, um, I know Matt, I think wants to, to have a comment, but at least it's clear for enforcement purposes. Otherwise, I think your hands are, you know, your enforcement officer is going to have their hands tied or get appealed to the ZVA all the time. Now you, why get involved in all that? If you can just clarify.
So, um, Matt, you got something?
I was just going to say we should just prepare an amendment, all typed out. And, um, fix, just fix it on the floor.
Don't think we can. We would, that would be adding.
Oh, we've done some amendments in the past.
Yeah.
Chairman, and, and I think it's just up to whether the town attorney believes it's a minor adjustment or you know, I know that for money articles, won't raise the money for a money article. It can only be kept or reduced, but this is a little bit different.
It would be more of a clarification.
I think you need to check with the town attorney.
Yeah, I, I think it's a mi, I think it's a minor change, but I could be wrong. I think it's, if we're going to do it, let's, let's try to get it all done, so it's, uh, you know, the best it can be.
Start over, hold another public hearing and
No, no. No, just, just, uh, just prepare an amendment. I would say, I mean, I would say prepare an amendment, have it ready for, on, uh, at annual, at our annual meeting and just do it on the floor.
These things are going to be discussed.
And is that?
One, this Thursday, I believe. Yeah, I know. I have something else to, but I'm, I'm going to have to skip it and go. But I think that, um, you know, as, um, Mr. Carlinos suggests, uh, I think that you get an amendment squared away, you run it by the town attorney to think if it's, is this too big a change or is, do you have to, because you actually probably have enough time. You only have to have your meeting uh, to approve the warrant language like the day of, although it's supposed to be posted, I know.
Right.
Um, but some things can be amended on the floor. We've done it before and others.
Right.
I actually thought we could, uh, do everything right up to the day of the meeting, to be quite honest with you, with small changes.
Well, can be. It's, it's the posting of the public hearing that has to be a certain amount, but yeah, you can wait till an hour before the meeting. And, because it's just your recommendation. You actually have the recommendation on both of these. Officially, a recommendation.
Vote to reconsider our prior vote tonight and then vote in the
No, it's not on your, it's not on your agenda. You get up, put your agenda, you'd have to, you know.
We should, we should put it on, we should, we should prepare an amendment for the next, or a recommendation for the next meeting, vote on it, and then take it to town.
Here's the thing, we got the baby Thursday.
Yeah.
Um, town council will be there.
Yeah.
Run it by him, that's pretty easy.
Yeah.
And, and if there is a problem, Mr. Chairman, one of my other thoughts was, we will be having I know that you have been asked about a couple of other things you want to put through to wait till the fall. Is like maybe just make it a zoning night and withdraw these two warrant articles now to, to reexamine. I don't know how critical this split
I mean, we
I, I don't know how
Or it's not, it's just, it's all done.
Yeah, okay. Well, okay, um, again, I'll take issue with that. Issue with a couple of parts on this, as far as how far, many towns allow you to go, you know, half, like if you have a two hundred foot zone, they let you go half of that again, so
You considered that, yep.
Yep, or you can go double that to two hundred to four hundred, but your language here, if somebody has a mile long property, it's like you could allow them to really intrude it. I think you're going to get a lot of pushback on this. That's all.
I know we are.
Yeah, well, I
From you.
Well, yeah, I'm not going to read my whole letter at the town meeting, but, but I will say that, you know, we've certainly we've certainly be substantially affected by zoning changes.
Right.
Partially because of the lack of, um, really thorough review by the boards at the time. And the lack of enforcement at the time, you know, we have a new board, we have a new enforcement, all great.
Um, and like, uh, I think most, I think our safeguard that we put most, all of this, we seem to be doing under special permit.
Hmm.
Like you say, if you're just rubber stamping everything, yes, that could be easy, but it, you know, you hope to have some flexi, it seems like it allows you flexibility with still having control, a lot more than site plan would.
Matt has his hand up.
Well, oh, again.
I see, yeah, there he is. Sorry. Go ahead, Matt.
I just wanted to ask Gordon since, because the reason we talked about this split zoning is for the one oh two property. Yeah, the reason it, oh, the reason it came up was for the old bowling lanes property. And, uh, I lost, I lost Gordon's, uh, voice on this. I don't know.
Oh.
You, you
There it is.
There it is. Yeah, so, so I think we, I think we, did we even say, that might be the only split zone is along that corridor, I think, in town.
No, there, there, there are other ones, um, just this is the mo, most recognized one.
So
I'd say.
So we have, I think the reason why we brought this up was kind of two reasons, for the bowling lane property. And I think we realized down the road of Meadow Farm. And I think there's a landscaping company up behind the apartments, be, behind, in, in the, um, veterinarian has a new parking lot up behind. You know, I, I think the concern was that they're beyond the two hundred foot zone all the way down there. Uh, or the, or the two hundred foot setback. Uh, and then along with the bowling lanes property, we had a car dealership come in that wanted to put in a business right at the bowling lanes, and all they needed was a little more room for a parking lot. And so, we lost that business. Um, that is a commercial corridor. So, I just feel like if we have it under special permit, we're going to take and affect any of these concerns that Gordon might have under the special permit. If a, if a, if a, if a new marijuana facility were to come in, I know we're all out, but I think a major concern for this board will be the smell. Um, I think if a, a coffee company came in, uh, uh, again, with, with the past experiences, especially Gordon, because we all know he's been dealing with us for a while, that would be a major concern. So I think that's going to be one of the things under special permit, that we're going to really um, or this board at any board should really be protecting the abutters as much as possible. But allow us to develop an area that is a commercial corridor. So I mean, I don't know. I don't know if there's a, I know, but you barely can fit anything on there. I just don't know if there's, they, they can't, there's a seventy-five foot setback on that side of the road, and on the other side, industri, uh, industrial, it's like fifteen feet. That's why we got that marijuana facility right on the road. And so, we're penalizing one side when the opposite side is right on the road. I, it just doesn't make sense that we've, what, what's your answer to getting that car dealership there? Not saying I'm a fan of the car dealership, I'm, or any business that just wants to take out a little more land into the residential area for a parking lot.
For a parking lot issue.
Or, or if their building is going to go another twenty feet, thirty feet into the residential, but not, I mean, that's, there's a cliff, I mean, there's a hill there. It's not just, I mean, it's a big hill right behind there. They have to cut, cut that, cut into that hill. So I guess, yeah, what's the suggestion to get them to have enough space there to create a business?
I think the, my concern is the fact that this board or any board in the future is allowed to do almost unlimited depth, whether the abutters like it or not. You know, um, that's my concern. If you were to have spelled an extra one hundred feet or an extra some, you know, a smaller amount, I wouldn't probably be standing in front of you right now.
Okay.
Because it would be a special permit, but the fact that you can go all the way back, I already know the problem down at Meadow Farm is they didn't even get a building permit to put the freaking building up. Owning. That's a problem. You know, um, and, and, uh, a lot of this comes down to zoning enforcement at the moment. Um, and so
Yeah.
I've had some questions with the zoning enforcement officer, so he's aware of my feelings about it, and, uh, we'll see where this goes, and I know
I, I think, and I think the zoning enforcement officer is, um, I think he's, that, the, the Meadow Farm issue is, I think that's kind of, uh, on his radar.
I have actually, he, yes, we had a discussion about it because it is, it actually became the departments, on the department's radar long before he came in in office. It came during a different person's, um, a past inspector and zoning enforcement officers ring. And so, this is, you know, he's been here a while, but it is not his original problem. To deal with, but yeah, it's on his radar.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm on board if the, if the board thinks that a boundary, uh, that gives us enough to work with a developer down there to put in a business that would work. Um, you know, I'm on board with changing that, amending that down the road.
This goes all the way to the Stockbridge line. At OPLI, it goes all the way to Stockbridge line.
Mm-hmm.
So you have anybody who wants to open a business in South Lee. Um, you know, the church property, even beyond.
Did you say, did you say it's OPL, did you say it's OPLI?
Um, from OPLI all the way down Route one oh two to the Stockbridge line.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Is the R B, two hundred feet back. But you have ability of some potential changes down the road. Now, I'm not saying anything like that's ever going to happen.
Right.
But you do have, you know, one oh two tavern. You know, you've got what Meadow Farm is already doing, uh, whoever owns that now.
Meanwhile.
You know, you, you have things there that, uh, I just hate to think, you know, they, they disallow spot zoning for a reason. And to me, to have this only be for the purpose of helping one lot.
But it's not, it's, it's all of them. But also, also that whole stretch back in oh nine, when we, when that got changed, that zoning did get changed, that was also designated in, uh, economic development section. I believe, if you look back.
Yeah, I, I don't remember, but I'll
Yeah, yeah. So that, and, and because of this split zone, it's been muted. So, so we tried to do something back then, but then because of that split zone, it, there's been, you can't develop any economy when you have a hundred feet to put a building in.
Hmm.
And all your hundred twenty-five to put everything in. Yeah.
I get it, but I think it's, uh, my biggest objection is the fact that it's you're, go the entire lot, you know, if this had been, again, as I said, like an extra hundred feet, I get it. Because looking at all those lots down there, I, I'm, it's not industrial anymore, it's business. Industrially, you need really big property. That's why we change
Not industrial.
Well, industrial's on the other side.
I get it, Matt, but, but on the two hundred feet, you could, that's why we took it away from being industrial.
Yeah. I'm okay with that. It's just, it's just a setback is, is, under the RB setback, it really hampers. If we could, that RB setback is seventy-five feet.
Yeah. Maybe that should be
That's a huge setback for that commercial strip. If we, even, even if we move that, we can't do that, but if, if we allowed that setback to be similar to the industrial side, that would help a business dramatically, dramatically without having to go further back.
I thought of that also, that the, the, the is investigating that kind of a setback change, is to look at the other RV zones and say, how would that make our town look, working with planning in the future master plan, you know, uh, remember the RV zone is going out of town on Route twenty, both ends of town. Would that act the look of our, you know, and doesn't matter, maybe nobody cares anymore. You know, maybe nobody cares. Big setbacks from the road, you know, I mean, nineteen seventy-two and nineteen sixty-eight or even nineteen eighty anymore.
It's a, it's a, it's a commercial strip, I want to, it's a commercial corridor.
Gotcha. So, but you, but in changing the setbacks, remember that so is Route twenty and East Lee and going up by the barracks and all that.
So I didn't say, I, I didn't say I was for changing the setback. I'm just saying the setback hampers us to allow and work with a developer to come in, say, like this car dealership that wanted, needed some more room for parking behind it. Um, so this was a way to solve that problem along this whole commercial strip as there are other businesses there, knowing that we have to protect the residential area that, that abuts it, but, um, I mean, I'm, I'm okay down the road changing it to a boundary of, once the board agrees on a comfortable enough back boundary to limit it, to give some safeguards, because To limit it, to give some safeguards because, but, but. Um. But I mean, I'm okay going forward as is. Uh, right now.
Mr. Chairman, no, okay, yeah, oh wait, and then I have another one.
Go ahead, I'm done. I, I spoke enough.
Gordon, I, I understand what you're saying. It looks like what I'm hearing is you're saying. There's too much discretion in future planning. That could be abused and harm residential nearby use. I agree that there's tremendous discretion in special permits always. And. I think it's kind of loaded against the applicant in a lot of ways, you know, the, the. Super majority voting requirement, for example. But that isn't a guarantee that anybody's going to really look at the criteria. I agree with you on that. What I don't understand is why a hundred feet makes it better for you. Okay, because let me give you an example. That air, I didn't, I don't have the map in front of me, but what I think I remember is. That there's. A street up back. That's more or less parallel than one oh two.
Fairview Street.
Fairview Street.
That area, you're looking at Highfield, then you.
What, the way I was thinking about this when I was, we were talking about it was. You've got a, a narrow strip on the front, you've got basically Meadow. For a very amount of distance. And may or may not be of any interest to anybody except the guy on one oh two, used for his or her business. Um. You're relying the matter, with or without your hundred foot limit, you're relying on the good judgment of the board, planning board in the future to protect neighbors. So even if, even if you got a hundred feet from us and we, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm probably for it, okay? But even if you got a limitation of a hundred feet, you might be. The guy that's. Twenty feet beyond that hundred feet, right?
Yes.
And you, you know, a hundred feet thing, the, the, the hundred and ninety foot lot that's right next to yours. We could still go right up to your fence line. You haven't really obtained anything and yet what you have done is if a guy has five hundred feet. Of unusable lot back there with nobody near it, we can't help them. Right? So I, I just feel like.
And that was.
Safer for you, maybe a little bit under certain circumstances, but in other cases, it's going to restrict us a lot. From he- helping a business that might need a hundred and fifty feet and there's nobody anywhere around.
And that was a discussion when we were doing it. And that's why I came to that.
Have you looked at the depth of all those lots, not, not right where I am?
In general.
You go around and how far does that go in? And, and I understand about. Uh, that Mr. Carliano brought up about cutting that, that embankment.
Yeah.
Nobody's going to go. Full depth of that lot, you'd have um, more than a turnpike sized retaining wall, that, that is just. Totally unrealistic if you're looking at just helping that one lot. You know, if that was the thing that generated this discussion.
People have layered parking lots, right?
Um, yeah, that would be quite the trick even still.
Well, well, behind the, the veterinarian, uh, they put in a extra parking lot up behind into the hill. It might've been a little easier than this place, but. Actually, the reason why they, this came up is because they, they could have stayed within. The, the, the embankment parking lot, but they were still over the line. Of the R B.
And so that's an enforcement issue where they should have had a cease and desist order that they encroached in the wrong.
No, 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 I'm talking about the, I'm talking about the car dealership that came in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They, their parking lot would have been technically. Over. Into the residential area. And um. So, so we needed to move that line just for that one, obviously, but that brings in the whole strip, so. Um. Anyways, and then there was, you know, the landscaping company up behind the apartments.
Get into past enforcement. Not the current enforcement, it's been a long time. There was a question years ago about how that got started and there was never a good answer and nobody ever. Decided to enforce our zoning bylaws. I believe they did it without permits. And there's a statutory limit on ten years. For construction without a permit, which allows the structure, but not necessarily an unlawful use, so you, you know. And, but I'm not going to get into all that with this, this is.
No, I, I just think, um. Our job is to encourage development. And protect the butters and I think, I think, um. I think we're attempting to do that here and. I guess there's always consequences, but I think if a board is protecting the butters, now the date, now the day's in is right next door to this lot, right? So there, if we have a special permit, they're going to get notified, they're going to come in and speak their mind, there's going to be some residential areas. The veterinarian's going to be there, so we're going to have. Strong input from a butters. Uh. On a potential business someday that wants to go in there. Isn't that enough to give us enough awareness of what we're doing?
So.
You don't think so?
If past practice, if you talk to somebody, you know, that once bitten, twice shy kind of thing, you know. Um, we got bit a couple of times, more than once, three different times we've been bitten. Um, and so I'm just shy, I'm just worried and that's, I don't mean to drag this out.
No, 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 it's, it's a good debate to have, uh. You, how long were you on the planning board, Gordon?
Um, back in the day, off and on is either an elected member or appointed alternate, uh, about eight years.
I'm sure. I don't know which projects, I don't know which projects you approve, but I'm sure some of those approvals had, uh. Uh, negative effects, I'm sure, that you probably wish you could go back and fix, right?
Only one that I ever thought of, only one thing, and it was a minor garage and it was, um. Actually, it's because I was being a nice guy and on my way to Vermont, a guy said he wanted to move the garage closer to his house. I said, go ahead and they end up closer to his house, man, in the front sack. And I came back from Vermont and said, what are you doing?
Wow.
That's the only one that I can remember that was, uh, not. Uh, approved, uh, proper land or something, but you know, undoubtedly, I made mistakes, everybody does. It's life.
What I say, Mr. Chairman, that I.
Go ahead.
I, I don't think the hundred foot. Thing is going to really. Prevent, if we had a hundred foot limitation on how much variance we could grant. From the boundary. I don't think, it wouldn't have hurt the car dealership, that would have been enough for the car dealership. And having no limit on it with a lot of other towns that do have a limit on it. Makes it look like it might be a little bit too much discretion for the, for the commission, for the board. So, um. I suggest that we do. Also amend that baby town meeting and add a hundred foot limit to the waiver.
I like, I don't know, I like your, your. Explanation before.
I, I sort of did too.
R B everywhere.
I know what I just watched, that's what I was doing, yeah.
And including on Route twenty, just understand the impact in other parts of town, not just, you really can't hurt us.
Well, sorry, but you're right, yeah, it's not.
I'm done, I'm trying to fight other residential units, not mine, mine's already screwed over. So I'm trying to help other people before they have to face what we've gone through. So with that, I'll, I will just suggest that I did download, I think, the most recent accessory dwelling and I'd love to meet. With, uh, you guys to talk about a couple of things and I can.
What we're talking about now.
Okay.
We're going into.
Let's get the heck away from this split zone thing. If you don't mind.
Go into this one now? Cause this one's just about done, this one's done too. Here we go.
Hey, before, before we go in there.
Anybody got a lighter, we might as well burn it now, here we go.
Hey, a question, quick question before we move into this. On our, on our split, on our split zoning. Uh, did we have any other towns that had a? Similar limit?
Yeah, there were a couple of towns.
They, they did a percentage, didn't they? A weird percentage? Yeah.
That's why I came up with a hundred feet. Was that I?
The one, the one that we, we. Kind of copied for the. Bylaw did not have a percentage or a, uh. Setback. Right? boundary?
Oh, I don't remember.
I, I just remember we did have a discussion on it though.
Okay, that's all.
If the use was a permitted use. We go back, I write. Into town. If it was a usage permitted by special permit. Then that triggered.
That was, yeah, there was one town with a weird something like that.
That would have been my problem when I heard that by, if it was a use by right, they could just do the whole lot, that, that's why I wrote in my letter, yeah, good. Last I heard and I'm thinking, oh my God, no, don't do that. You know, don't do that. Okay.
Okay. A D U's. Um, we had a little bit of a rewrite after last meeting, right?
Yeah.
Do we?
Chairman, we, we talked about. Yep. Definitional issues, first of all, and I think Gordon, I wasn't here, but Gordon, I think suggested when. Meeting I missed that. We add some definitions, um, and come up with gross floor area. Um. We decided that we would add a definition of short-term rental. Um, I think the A D U was in the last draft, the accessory dwelling unit definition was in the last draft, but what we decided was that because. We already have definitions in chapter fourteen. That are alphabetical, alphabetically presented, that we could move these. Into chapter fourteen, even though they would apply only one, that only to one ninety-nine dash four point five, most cases. Um, we also noted that it was a definition of. Um. That there was a use. Gordon, I don't know if you know this, but floor area is used several times in the existing bylaw. And so it's not defined. It's used for parking and other things and in special, special zones, it's used. Uh, it's not defined, but we, we stuck with gross floor area, which I think you approved of. In the original draft. And gross floor is used in this new section, four point five. Um. And, um. I think the purpose and intent is largely the same, Mr. Chairman. The, um. Uh, we narrowed it to apply only to. Physically separate. The definition applies only to physically separate dwellings, so because we realized that. If it's attached. It just turns a one family into a two family and we, then we got into all sorts of tangles about. What about two families with an A D U that's attached and what is that?
That's a three family.
Yeah, I guess so, but.
That's what it is.
It wasn't, it wasn't what we were trying to fix, what, what we were trying to fix was separate. Separate mother-in-law buildings, I guess.
That's it. Yeah, we can get in.
Um.
Well, I mean, we.
And B two talks about, uh, the normal findings under thirteen point three. Uh, but also a sewer finding. That was in the earlier draft and then the minimum size. Uh, we talked at the last meeting about percentage of size of the, of the main building. And I thought we came out with. Uh, a minute, a, a square footage minimum and a square footage maximum. Rather than using any percentages of the main building.
Yep.
Um, and, um.
Do, do we want to go back to these or? Uh, hit them or, or are we good with eight hundred feet, eight hundred square feet?
Committee, I'm just reviewing for you what I put in here.
Okay, let, let's review then we'll, then we'll take some, then we'll do some discussion.
Um, I think, I think the setback, parking. Home occupation is all the same. We did say no A D U shall be used for short-term rentals. I think that may have been a recent addition. And the rest, the second page is just definitions. In the, in chapter fourteen, so that, that's my summary of this draft.
So. So basically in B one. If you have a. How that wording is. If you have a, a duplex, can't have an A D U. Correct?
Right.
Or if you have, already have a mother-in-law apartment in your house. You're, you're done, correct?
Right.
All right. And then eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, um, no.
Back and forth, because that's, that's not, if, if you have. You have a. Hey, let's put it out there, you have a three, five acre, three lot, acre lot. Which is required in some sections of our town. And you have a. Two thousand or twenty-five hundred square foot house. You know, it, it's going to be a sizable house, a. Thousand. Square foot wouldn't, I, I, I come up with a thousand is what I like. I, I remember, I remember living in a thousand square feet.
Yeah.
And, and it was. It, it was a. Yeah, it wasn't big.
Well, I live now in twelve hundred square feet, so I.
But there's two of you, we, I was thinking a, a small, we had a small family at the time.
I actually.
It got bigger.
If you don't mind me bringing up a slightly different point. I wouldn't want, wondered about the four hundred square feet too, because. Why, I just out of curiosity, I subscribe to the New York Times and I. Went in looking at an article recently about what can you buy for four, four hundred thousand, I think on the Upper East Side. And you can get a three hundred and fifty square foot studio apartment. That's for four, four hundred thousand dollars.
I know.
I'm, we're looking at apartments, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, apparently, my, my point is that they're in urban areas. People are living in a lot less of words.
I mean, should we, should we take out the minimum? And just let it fly?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I get, make it, most towns put a minimum in. Um, but they take out the maximum because if you have a single family, if you have. A D U.
Yeah.
Why not put on the same size houses, what you've got, you just have a two-family house. Do we restrict the size of a two-family house? You don't restrict the size of either unit. So why are you restricting the upper?
Wait, our, our mind just.
Yeah, yeah.
Explained our, 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 our thought process on that was that we wanted the neighborhoods to look proportional. Um. But maybe they would, maybe they wouldn't, I don't know.
What if somebody builds a house in a pack that's twice the size of the guy in, of the whole house?
Well.
That's a detached.
Garage Mahalls.
Yeah.
That's what.
Like, I, I'm talking about attached.
No, we're not talking about it, we're not talking about attached.
I don't read it that way here.
Yeah.
Not in the first couple of sentences.
I'll read the definition.
Well, that's different, your definition isn't up front.
Definitions are in definitions.
Yeah, well, I know. Definition should be section two and not fourteen, but that's a different issue.
You're right, it should be. It should be first.
It's right, then you know.
It should be first, yes.
Makes it easier for people with the job we used to have, Gordon.
Yeah, yeah.
We have a definition, actually, we are in the bylaw.
Right, no, I get it, but.
Sort of use some of the time.
So, so we did on the second page there, Gordon, we, we have the definition that we're using for A D U. Self-contained housing unit that is detached from an existing. Single-family dwelling on the same lot.
I have no problem with that.
The work.
Yeah, the, the issue is that you are so different than. Definitely says, like, go to Great Barrington, their A D U is, is within a single-family house. That's why they make it be at least four hundred, but then they limit it in size. Because it's attached, so I thought that's what you were doing. Now that it's detached. I, I will let you have your fight.
Think we should have a minimum or a maximum or both?
I think you'll find that the state building code is going to require a minimum. Because we have, yeah, tiny houses has a minimum.
You got a, a number?
I think it's four hundred, but I don't want to swear to it because it hasn't been adopted.
Tiny houses are that big.
No, well, I think it's, it's like the maximum of what you can do separately, I think, as a, as a tiny, otherwise it's just another house. Are you going to define this as another house? So you have two single-family houses on a lot that are not attached. You know, I mean, there's, there's, you gotta think your way through that one, which we've never allowed before. Yes, you can find them around town illegally created in somebody's garage, they created another whole apartment, it's detached, that's unlawful. It always was. Um, there are other communities, yeah. Other communities have adopted certain requirements, the problem with the. Right now, a tiny house would have to meet the requirements of a single-family home, two exits. All that kind of stuff, but in Florence, but what, you know, or the state building code is going to be amended. To make it clear that a tiny house, when the tenth edition comes out, that a tiny house will only have to have one exit, because they're so small.
Well, maybe the planning could think, you know, about future work involving tiny houses.
I can bring you in some drafts.
First step and maybe tiny houses would be.
Would be part of this?
Next, the next project.
Are they, I mean, I was with those, they, some of them are even on wheels, so how do you?
See, the issue is some tiny houses are R Vs, they're basically, they don't meet the standards of the building code or HUD. Under the federal thirty-two eighty. Construction requirements for mobile homes. They are required to have an R V sticker on them now, so they're, they, they have to be able to be driven across the road. Or, you know, if, if they're, uh. it, it gets very involved. And I'm willing to meet with any of you to question about that, so you have to discuss, I don't have it with me tonight, but I can certainly get it for you. But this is all going on at the state level at the same time, you guys are talking about this.
I think ADUs first.
I think so.
It's a separate matter, right?
Yes.
Tiny houses versus, versus ADU?
Yeah, ADUs, unless you're going to use a tiny house by definition that remains on a chassis, remains with its wheels, it's portable, and able to be moved at any time, connected to the ground, but not on a these, these RV things are, so if you drove a Winnebago in your backyard and decide to use it as a, as a rental, that's kind of what you're looking at.
Tiny house.
Yes, with some of the things that want to be sold right now as tiny houses. Yeah, and that's why there's like this gaping hole that is also being addressed at state level. By law, one of the other can't conflict with, no, if you allow RV
Tiny house.
ADU tiny house.
I didn't intend to cover tiny houses.
Good, yeah, I get it, so this is, ADU is going to, ADU would be a second house, it would be on a permanent foundation.
Yep.
Therefore, it's not the RV thing.
I have to say, should I say foundation, on a foundation?
You don't have to, I mean, if it's a single family, I'd have to think about it, I just
Well, does a
Given the most updated, and I will look at it.
Does a self-contained housing unit?
Housing unit, yeah, well, and by the way, the RV things are very, very specific. They say they not to be used as full-time residences. It's
Tiny house.
It's big, the RV, the RV sticker on a building that says not to be used as permanent residents.
Thought on this was, we're not going to do Winnebagos, we're not going to authorize
We're not doing town, no, we're doing all houses.
I'll be happy to take talk to you and to Conrad if you're in the subcommittee. Oh, Mr. Carlin.
That big?
Good. He has something else to say, Mr. Chairman, are we going on?
Uh, he doesn't have his hand up, oh, he's just there.
I, I was gonna, yeah, I'll raise my hand if you want.
You got something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, our, our original intent, I think, was good, because it's detached, like Gordon said. We could have two of the same sized houses on a lot, so that's why we wanted to limit the the higher end of the square footage, so I'm still in favor of that, although would we be hurting Buck, your point of, if we've got a, say, a 3,000 square foot house on four or five acres, and they want to put up a 1,300 square foot in-law apartment, would we want to remove the max? Leave it open? Under special permit, the planning board can decide how that project looks in proportion to the existing house. Isn't that part of our discretionary of how to decide?
I think that'd be way too discretionary, and we'd be in land court, no.
Yeah, I, I think you'd have some problems to turn channels off. That's too
Right away. Because who, who are we? I don't like your project, and, and I say, oh, it's too big, no matter what size you put on it.
Well, I know, I, I was thinking, you know, we could say it was detrimental to the character of the neighborhood, because if you had two 1,200 square foot houses to get, gather on a lot, that's going to look really bad, where if you have a, a spread out, three, four acres, but I, but I get it, I just wanted to bring it up, I'm good with the minimum and the maximum of 800, but your point, Buck, was you know, what if someone's got more acres and can build a bigger garage, and it still looks good, we can't really allow that over 800 square feet.
I think
What makes 800, 9,000?
I, I would feel better around that.
All right, well, let's, let's do that. That's
I don't know, I still, but it's still not much of a house, and
It sounds like everybody agrees on 1,000 as a maximum.
Yeah, we could, I like 1,000.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
Is that okay?
This is a board decision.
But let me ask you, though.
The size of the lot, I realize there's, you have some discretion, and you can also be found to be very arbitrary quickly.
Could be.
You don't have some, again, you can make up a policy, you know, for your review, so people know what you're doing. That would be helpful, at least it would show you're not being arbitrary and capricious, because that's what, that's anything you do under special permit. That's what you get appealed on.
Yeah.
That it's arbitrary and capricious. You've done your due diligence. But just, you know, just be cautious of due diligence and, and arbitrary and capricious.
Any other changes besides 1,000?
Gentlemen, your business tonight.
I'm not going to say anything about, I need your help on this next
Which one?
Short-term rentals. What do we tag now, do we tag, does Lee get money from
Yes.
Hotels and motels?
Yes.
We have a special Lee revenue source from hotel and motel tax of what?
And you do for rentals, I think it's three to three and a half percent if you get, anything that's registered with the Commonwealth, in fact, if you advertise on Airbnb, or Verbo, or whatever, if you do any advertising through any of those, and consistent, you have to register by law. Yeah, yeah, it's chapter 64.
I know that, that's not what I'm asking.
Yeah, but if you register, then all the stuff goes through them, and the state wants their cut. In which case, they let the town, the town can know what their cut is, so we get a cut of all that.
Town automatically gets a cut of short-term rental.
Yeah.
Yes.
Even though we never voted to impose a tax on short-term rental.
It's imposed
A room tax.
Massachusetts, I believe. I don't know that it's optional. I, I thought that it was just mandated.
State law that everybody, every, every
Every rental.
Hotel and short-term rental in Massachusetts.
Every, yes, and they added short-term
And they added
Right.
Definition, which I hope you guys use. Make up your own, you know, there's already a definition in the law, no offense, Peter. Legal definition, Peter.
I can take it.
I mean, it's like, there's, there's already Some of the towns around are already conflicting with
So, all right, so
What? I think so, you'll find definitions, you'll find definitions in the front of all the general.
Are we allowing short-term rentals in our?
ADUs?
ADU.
Well, this is not on the copy I have.
Good.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Well, let's
Why?
No, I'm happy about that.
Tell me why.
Why? Because I think the intent is to create long-term housing, because there is a crisis, and short-term rentals. In some places.
What if? What if you're in between renting?
To go. I will just
Actually, if, once
Gordon, you already dropped the box, stick around.
Well, one, well, once I tell you, once we come off of ADUs, and we go to that next one, Peter will be taking over his chair.
Yes, I get it, I understand, I understand.
Um, so I, I love doing these scenarios for you, Peg, all right. I I have, I build my ADU, okay? My mother-in-law dies.
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
I'm sorry, she died.
I got a few, and she was an old battle, who knows? So anyway, let's
We're not done yet.
Let's
Thanks for your input, Gordon.
Thank you, Gordon.
All right, go ahead, y'all.
So I
She died.
I have, I have someone lined up in a couple of years, a, a young child coming up that I want to have the house.
Yes.
But in the meantime, need to make some income out of it.
So you give that, give that person a month-to-month rental. And it's not a short-term rental.
But they're finding younger mothers. Wouldn't but you wouldn't get, you wouldn't find that. You know, then you're into a
You might.
A regular rental, I'm just trying to give because I, I want reason, do you really think people will be building these to do ADUs?
No.
I don't know.
I mean, do, do you think people would be building ADUs to do short-term rentals? Huh?
I think it's very conceivable.
How much money do you think you're going to get out of it?
They're pretty profitable.
They make, they're very profitable.
No. You're not going to make a living on it.
If they're nice, they're profitable.
You're not going to make a living on it.
No, you're not going to make a living.
I think if you can, can convert a section of your house to fit either one, then you're going to see more of this happen, but to put up an independent structure?
Just for that, I don't think the month, it doesn't work.
The economics of the cost.
The economics don't work.
I don't know.
So Buck, you know that this says you can't do it, right?
This says you can't.
Yeah, I see it, I'm, I'm just want to make sure we're sure with that.
Oh, okay, okay.
I will say, if I could just add this, I was watching in Stockbridge, their planning board meeting, and they are, they were doing the same thing we're doing, it was a very interesting meeting. There was even a letter today in the Eagle by somebody who
Oh, there's
Yeah, and what one person said, which I thought was interesting, is if you make it primary occupied, your mother-in-law died, it could also be eventually, in the definition, the way it was worded, it could be your spouses, your grandchildren, your children, would, would be all right, because you mentioned last time, you build a short-term rental on your property.
You build an ADU.
You brought an ADU on your property. And you want to go, you are tired of the house or whatever, you go to Florida.
Yep.
Okay, stay in Florida. Maybe your grandchild would be, or daughter, son, would be in your house. And if the definition were made properly, that would be extremely okay. So there are ways that could be, but anyways, that's off the subject, but we're not allowing short-term rentals in the ADU.
You win, Peg.
Not me, I I've lost all kinds of stuff over my life, so, but I
I, I would I don't care if paragraph seven stays or not.
Oh, good, we're all set.
You
So we take it out.
You want it to stay?
The short-term rental, I like it.
Put in paragraph seven and read paragraph seven, and tell me if you like it. Reading you, the bottom page one.
Line seven.
Line seven, C1, C7.
C7, short-term rentals, no, will be not offered. Sounds good to me.
You want to keep it? So if you built an ADU in your backyard?
Right.
It's only to be used for long-term rental, no, short-term rental, that's what this says.
I know, I like it.
You're okay?
I love it.
Yeah, that's what Peter
But that's my weird make
But hey
What?
But hey, don't we, our perp, our, our
Whatever.
Goal here is for people to get housing.
Yes.
So go renting it to Tanglewood for the BSO, which is not short-term rental,
I know.
But it's only going to take the summer, and that means somebody that really needs a home year-round will not have it. There you go.
No, or, or Tanglewood.
Or Tanglewood, or Tanglewood, there you go, let's put that.
Or short-term rentals or Tanglewood rentals.
But that's, they, that does the same thing, and so many people do, but it doesn't fall into short-term rental. But in the spirit of it, because we have, we have a lot more space taken up from that than short-term rentals.
If somebody objects to this at town meeting, my defense of it is going to be weak.
We're, we're going to
No.
Peg's going to speak.
Peg's got it.
Said up front that night.
Well, if the people want you know No, if the people want it
Yeah, he's here.
Majority rule. What do you think?
Let me see you again.
There he is.
There he is, there's Matt, what do you think, Matt?
C, line seven.
I'm fine either way, I'll be honest, first, I was, well, again, going back to our whole intention was for the person with a garage structure that's detached, we don't want to make them have to attach it, and we want them to be able to have some extra living space. So for me, I'm fine with it. Now uh, at the end of the day, I'm, I'll go along with whatever they want to do, if they wanted Airbnb it, you know, who are we to stop it, but I thought the original intent was to create some extra housing options for our current residents. Not
That's what A2 says.
I agree with that.
It's, it's for the current person to stay in their house.
Yeah.
Yes.
But once that current person has gone to the great beyond, it's no man's land.
Well
Yeah. We can't control
When your mother-in-law comes back.
You can't do something based on whether
I don't know.
Ethan Allen lived there, right?
Gosh.
All right.
How did we vote for the board, did we all agree to to make it not available to short-term rentals?
That's the way it is now, Matt.
So it is now.
It's the last line on page one, paragraph C7. Not available for short-term rentals.
Yeah, I just didn't know, do we all agree on that, or do we have some?
I think Peg wants it, and everybody else says, okay, Peg, that's what I think.
Basically, it's not.
Don't blame it on me.
Oh, yeah, and you're going to have to speak, well.
I will if we have to.
Well, I know how, I know how, I know how Peg feels.
No costumes at night.
I know how Peg feels, how does everyone else feel about
It's going to be late, it's going to be late in the meeting, too, you know that, you're going to be in trouble here.
I'm fine with it either way.
Oh.
I think, if we leave it in, I think the argument is, we're creating a new opportunity for building a building that isn't permitted now. We should proceed cautiously and see how it works out for a few years. And then later, we want to expand it so that short-term rentals are allowed. That's, that's a plausible argument, right?
That's very good, Peter.
Well, that, you have me sold, that was pretty good. What's the other argument, what does Dave Forrest think about this, and Conrad?
I still would like to keep the seven. But we're not going to be able to enforce it long-term. I mean, we're building, you're, you're allowing people to create an income, supposedly to stay in their abode. Uh, and that's, and they're up in age, so I guess they're including me, but next year, once you're gone, it'd be impossible to enforce.
Well, no, it's, it, it's still the AD, we're not saying owner occupied.
Okay.
We threw that, we got rid of that. But the
So that makes it better.
The short-term the short-term is the ADU. But then you could just always live in your ADU and rent out your main house.
Oh, that's right.
You know, guys?
And it's not
It's a catch 21, I told you.
Believe me, it
Yeah, probably. Well
Especially if you've got, the kids are gone, and
And, and believe me, it's not Peg, despite what you think, it's not always cracked up to be, you have to like it.
Oh, I agree.
You have to like it, you have to like the hospitality aspect of it, because that's
No, I understand that.
I thought Peter, I thought Peter made a pretty good argument.
I did, too.
Um, and and I think now, we, now we allow a, we allow this to be done, but it has to be attached, so we already allow it, right?
It's attached.
But it's got to be attached, so they have to put a roof or a walkway to attach to the house, so in a way, we already so, yeah, I'm good with it, I'm good with it saying no short-term rentals. Conrad, you never gave your opinion, or you already did maybe last meeting.
Well, I'm kind of looking back to A2. Add moderately priced rental units to the housing stock to meet the needs of smaller households, make housing units available to moderate-income households that might otherwise have difficulty finding housing. That's the intent and purpose, that's the way I'm kind of looking at it.
Yep.
Now, from a reality standpoint, only because I've done this, Now, from a reality standpoint, only because I've done this. If you want to put an ADU in your backyard.
Oh, yeah, I'm thinking about it today.
So I did that. Uh, I mean, brother and I built the place. I put about seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars in materials. We put the swipe equity to build it. Contractors tell me it was going to cost me about a hundred, a hundred and ten, ten years ago. To build a seven hundred and fifty square foot freestanding, call it. Better muted on there. Take the garage. I'm estimating it's going to cost about fifty thousand, more or less, to rehab that. So it depends. I mean, if you got a nice garage, it's structurally sound, it's going to cost you fifty, fifty-five thousand to rehab it. For a ADU. But if you're going to do a ground up separate, a detached thing. Again, my numbers were, you know, a hundred, a hundred and ten. Ten years ago. So, you know, look at that number today. So I mean, it's.
So what is that? You haven't said the short-term rental yet. Yes or no?
No, I I kind of go back to A two where.
Yeah.
It's, I would say no to the short-term rental. But I kind of like the idea that. Let's see how it goes and maybe after.
Right.
And actually. I like P, uh, I like Peter's explanation if he had to defend it. But I also like Conrad going back to A two as a defense of our intent, and I think people will. Be appreciative that the board is thinking, uh.
Yeah.
Right.
Thinking about people, so.
Or take the A two out of there.
I I like it.
No, I like.
No, if you.
Our goal.
If you want to go with STR idea, then we we take A two out.
Right.
So the argument that if you, if you really want to have. Space for young workers and your kids. The STRs will eat up all of the space that gets built and there won't be anything left to beat the goals of A two.
But we're also looking at a ADU for.
I don't.
Elderly parents that you want to have move being close to you.
Right.
Or the your college, college kids coming back, you want to have a unit available for them.
Oh, we're going to leave it the way we started.
We are.
I know.
Just because I I wanted to stir it a little bit.
Well, you're you're just having fun, Buck, so.
Sometimes.
So we have another one.
I think so.
But we're all.
Yeah, I think we're done. Um, okay, so but we're, we're done with ADUs. We can put this to bed?
I think we need to, when we get them both. Ready to go, I would suggest one with another public hearing sometime.
Yep, yep. And we'll do them both the same time.
Yeah, as a pair, I think as a pair.
I think, because I think.
There's a lot that, there's a lot to talk about in STR too.
Yes.
Glad we got the tax thing a little bit straightened out because that simplifies it a bit. I didn't, I hadn't dealt with the tax angle at all.
Thirty-five hundred this year.
That's good.
To the town. I paid extra.
That's good, though.
So it is.
You paid thirty-five hundred to the state because of your short-term rentals?
Yes.
Yeah.
Which to the, no, town gets that. That is to the state. It goes through the state to the town.
You know how much the town gets of your money?
Yes.
Yeah.
How much does the state get of your money?
No, that's, that is.
Everybody.
Much more?
No, I don't think the state takes out of that. It was four percent for town-of-Lee room tax. I believe it was four percent.
You know.